Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Town Council's regular session at 7:35, and the date tonight is Monday, September 12, 2011. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like for us to just have a moment of silence for all of the September 11 victims and families, our fallen heroes. So, a moment of silence, please. Dale, could we have the roll call, please?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Present.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Four members present. Councilman O'Neill is absent.
And if I can just comment on behalf of Jim O'Neill. He's asked to be a master of ceremonies for a very special presentation and gathering together for a very dear friend, so that's why Jim O'Neill is not with us tonight. We have the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings for the work session of August 15, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session, August 15, 2011.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Would any councilor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
No. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a victualing license to Cretin Company Doing Business as Sweetcakes, 1227 Kingston Road, Peacedale, Rhode Island. Application by James Cretin, President, 351 North Road, Peacedale, Rhode Island. This is a new application. Do we have someone here? Welcome. And are you James Cretin?
James Cretin, yes.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about your business?
Well, I've been a fan of this particular little enterprise for a while. I think the owners have developed a fantastic business, a real asset in the community, so my plan is just to keep that going. I've got some talented young bakers there who I think may, in the future, be able to extend this even further, so my plan is just keep at the level they're at and maybe someday in the future, move forward.
Do we have questions here at the table? Polly.
Will the original owners be working for you as well, or are they bowing out?
One is bowing out. The current owners, the original owner, Betsy, will be staying on until Christmas, so I'm very happy with that. She'll be a consultant, making sure that we have all the methods and routines down pat before she leaves.
That's nice. Thank you.
Kathy?
And are you planning on keeping the hours of operation the same? And why don't you tell everybody while you have the TV here, let people know what your hours of operation go.
The hours of operation, well, from 7:00 to 5:00, we're open most days, Sunday, 8:00 to 3:00. You know, that may change, subject to whatever's going on in particular time, but, no, we're available. My intent is to be open, to be a very dependable stopping place for the people of the community.
Is there a specialty that you're going to really focus on? They have great cakes there.
Yeah, the cakes, which, you know, if you've had them, you know, are really spectacular. We're going to get that nailed down pretty quickly, in my intention, so that we're not going to miss a step in this process. Going to keep what we have and then go forward from there.
Good. Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
I so move. I, license A.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. And my apologies, the other votes were not 5-0-0, they were 4-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Our second license tonight is a resolution granting a pool table license to Roadie Joe's LLC, 515 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Gary Cello, managing member, 289 Robin Hollow Road, West Greenwich, Rhode Island. And do we have anyone representing? Welcome.
How you doing?
And are you Gary Cello?
I am not.
That's what we thought. If you could state your name, please.
It's Jared Mellem. I'm the general manager of Roadie Joe's.
Okay. Welcome. Could you just tell a little bit about your endeavor?
We brought pool tables in, not knowing we needed a special license for pool tables because we already had a gaming license, and I got a phone call stating that we needed a separate license, so we stopped the use of them and applied for the pool table license.
Okay. Any questions here at the table? Carol?
You already have the pool tables, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And where are they? In the place?
In the backside room.
Oh.
Any further questions? Kathy?
Did you notice any change in the clientele with the pool tables at all when they were in use prior to you stopping?
Not any change.
No.
They were being used on a nightly basis until, like I said, I put it to a halt because I didn't know I was supposed to have a different license, so they've been out of use for about three weeks now.
Okay. And it's two we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Polly?
And are they used most of the time? Were they used most of the time?
Mostly at nighttime.
At nighttime? I see.
A few during the day.
Nice to give up.
But mostly at nighttime.
Move around. Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Which brings us to communications. We have a resolution adopted June 27, 2011, by the Cranston City Council, urging Governor Chafee to open the state bid for debit card services used by the state of Rhode Island as received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and we've decided to place it on file.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. This is the time, if anybody would like to come to the mic and state their name, the mic is open for interested citizens. At this time, I'm going to move forward. I just want to reinforce some dates that are coming up. The Washington Council Regional Planning Meeting is going to be September 14 for the Town Council's notification at 8:30. The Washington Trust has invited the Town Council Wednesday, September 14, to a South County Business Partners and Community Leaders at the Coast Guard House, so that is this Wednesday. We also have General Treasurer Gina Romondo will be holding a meeting at the Town Hall on Thursday, September 15 to discuss pension reform. Answer any questions. This is September 15, 10:30 to 11:00. We also, I'm not sure if the rest of the council got this, but it was Rhode Island Renewable Energy Sitting Partnership. I'm not sure, Steve, if you had gotten this. It's at URI, September 15, 6:00 to 9:00. It came through an email. 6:00 to 9:00, URI Coastal Institute, the Narragansett Bay Campus. Okay?
I didn't get it.
So, I'll pass that to you, Paul. And then, September 16, there is a gathering in Charleston at the Gallery for Senator Sheldon Whitehouse from 6:00 to 8:00. And, most important to my heart, on Saturday, September 17, we have a local resident, Joe Patrick, who has left South Kingston, and I'm sure you've read about it in the paper. He has walked to the Pentagon and Ground Zero, and he will be, there will be a celebration at the Elks Lodge at 1:00 on Saturday, September 17. So, kudos to Joe Patrick for this great endeavor to honor, it's called "One Man's Walk to Honor the Fallen Heroes" of September 11. And then, the Gardard School was looking for an elected official for, they're trying to get in the World Book of Guinness, for September 23. They're doing a Simon Says at 1:00, so good luck to them. And then, the Village Green groundbreaking ceremony is September 18, and I believe that's 4:00. We also have the Fireman's Parade, September 25. I believe that's at 12:00. So, it's quite a lot of things happening in South Kingston. Does anybody have any further dates to inform the public? Okay. Last call for comments from interested citizens before we move on. At this time, we're going to move to the Town Manager's Report.
I wanted to take a moment to personally thank, on behalf of the staff, and I think also council, all of the municipal departments that were involved in the hurricane planning and management of the storm that occurred on August 28. I think it's important for the public to know the level of involvement that goes into planning for disaster management, or potential disaster management. It involves all of the municipal departments, and I want to thank each and every one of the employees that dedicated a great deal of time and effort to ensure public health and safety, whether it's Police Department, EMS Department, our fire districts, fire marshals, Public Services Department, involving both utilities for water and wastewater, as well as the Highway Department for street maintenance, School Department, and particularly the high school staff in making that facility available for the emergency shelter, our recreation program, and specifically the guild, which stayed open during the time when there was power outages to allow for the public to have shower facilities, the senior program that managed the special needs population and ensured that those folks that were homebound without power had the services that they needed to be able to properly conduct their business. They also provided transportation to and from the evacuation center. Our planning department dedicated a great deal of time with the mapping that was necessary for GIS. That mapping system was used not only for the development and planning of the evacuation areas and routes, but also for the fire department in their efforts to distribute 4,500 specific notices to 4,500 houses that were located within the low lining, potential flood areas. The Communications Department ensured that any of our public buildings, as well as the elderly housing, had proper fire alarm system capabilities. The shelter management people, including the Red Cross, did a great job in terms of running the facility for us for approximately a 20-hour period. There was also a great deal of coordination with the University of Rhode Island, South County Hospital, and South County Hospital worked directly with our EMS crew to deal with those folks that needed either oxygen or electricity to be able to run medical equipment that services them, and the town of Narragansett and the Rhode Island EMA. I also want to thank my staff and the manager's office that dealt with updating of the website and providing information through that office, and being able to provide for four reverse 911 calls that went to area residents in the evacuation areas. Police Department during that emergency ended up manning 13 different posts for roads that were closed during the storm itself. So, there was a great deal of coordination that was necessary. Everybody did an excellent job. I also want to also thank the general public, who cooperated with everything that the town staff asked them to do, whether it was in evacuation efforts, whether it was in dealing with the loss of power, the reporting of it, or whether it dealt with the street maintenance subsequent to the storm. I think that we were ready for a much more serious storm. Fortunately, it did not occur, but we planned for the worst and hoped for the best, and we were fortunate on this occasion. The exercise is important to us so that we're ready for the next one when it comes, but again, my thanks to the entire staff for the professional response that they provided in manning those duties.
And Steve, a big thank you from the Town Council to you and your staff with the level of communication, the level of detail, looking at the big picture for the safety of every citizen in the town of South Kingston. You kept us well informed, and I don't think that there was anything that was not looked at through a microscope, so many thanks to you.
Thank you.
Last thing that we have now is to deal with the cost reimbursement issues. Those will be dealt with over the next few weeks, and hopefully we'll have this entire incident behind us.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that, too?
Please.
We're the elected officials, and you people elect us, and we get the reports from Mr. Alfred on what goes on in this town, and he just, very low-keyed, explained everything that just happened during that storm. But the level and the amount of people out there working, this whole staff, everybody that's sitting in this room, and Mr. Alfred, and the amount of hours that he put in that day, you know, right down there in the heart of the storm. And again, thankfully, it wasn't as bad as it could have been, but I mean, we were bracing for the worst. But to keep all of us informed, as your representatives, you know, about what's going on, it is absolutely amazing. And when people say, "Where do our tax dollars go?", "What happened during that storm?", and what, from the Town Manager, right on down to the people picking up the brush, and the people manning the high school, the senior center, and the list of people, and the care and concern for the people who had medical needs, who didn't have electricity, who needed backup for some of their medical equipment. It's quite scary for a lot of people, and this town was there backing all of those people and keeping them calm, and making sure that they had backup medical equipment, some of the elderly people who needed to be checked in on, who were on our list of people to visit, making sure everybody was checked in. That's our police force going around doing that. The fire, the union fire district, you know, going right in there, cutting down the trees and limbs and clearing the roads. It's an unbelievable town that we have, and it makes me proud to be, sitting up here as a councilperson, to see everybody working, and I think they're very, very humble in what they say, but to see them in action and hear about it, I think, when you ask about your tax dollars locally, let me tell you, it's very well spent with everybody that works here in this town of South Kingston, and I appreciate everybody and everybody and everything that they did here, and just the constant updates from Mr. Alfred to all of us about what was going on was just great, just excellent. So, thank you, Steve, and thank you, everybody, the staff that's here, and everybody, you know, who listens, that worked on it. So, we have a good group of people here, and just let you know what we see happening. So, thank you.
Of course, the West Kingston area was one of the hottest-hit areas with the least amount of power, so.
Yeah, well, tell people more. I know you didn't, but tell your neighbors when you're at the grocery store you were here, and you can pass it on. Thanks.
Anything else, Steve, for the Town Manager's Report?
No, I think that concludes it for tonight, unless there's questions on any of the three reports that I issued during the, since the last meeting.
Any further questions here at the table? We're all set, which will move us to the Town Solicitors' Report.
Just want to echo how well things worked. I was one of the citizens in the mandatory evacuation area, and not only did I receive several reverse 911 calls, but also had these bright pink neon flyers delivered to myself and the whole neighborhood with regard to the evacuation. Very well coordinated, very professionally done, and it all turned out well. And unless there are questions, I have nothing more this evening.
Any questions here for Mike? Okay. Appointments. We will hold off until the next meeting, when we have all five Town Council members at the table, which brings us to new business. We have a resolution authorizing the Town Clerk to advertise for order of notice, a public hearing relative to an application for a license, to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. This is Class A retail liquor license, application for a Class A retail liquor license by Village Liquors LLC, DBA Village Liquors, 50 South County Commons Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Susan Pagliarini, member for Unit E1 of Building Number 6, in accordance with an amendment to the 1998 master plan for the village at South County Commons, granted July 12, 2011 by the Planning Board, and a special use permit granted August 17, 2011 by the Zoning Board of Review, and is further defined in a site plan on file in the Town Clerk's office. So, this is...
I move approval of new business item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. Which brings us to new business item B. This is a resolution authorizing the Town Clerk to advertise for order of notice, a public informational hearing for public discussion relative to the need for additional liquor licenses within the community. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item B.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. New business item E. This is a resolution authorizing a supplemental grant of bid to MHQ Municipal Vehicles 401, Elm Street, Marlboro, Mass., for one Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptor V8 vehicle in an amount not to exceed $23,191, including trade-in allowance and equipment transfer installation, and as further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the Town Manager dated September 1, 2011, and entitled Supplemental Bid Recommendation: Police Vehicle Replacement Car 418. Steve?
Recommendation is to award based on a contract that was first approved earlier this year with the firm of MHQ Municipal. What we're looking to do is to purchase one of the four police vehicles that'll be replaced in the 11-12 year. Now, we'll put out those other three as a separate bid, probably in the winter period, once the vehicles have more mileage on them. The budget shows about $25,000 per vehicle. Cost to this vehicle, under the existing bidding documents, would be approximately $23,191. I'd request the council's action, since the vehicle needs to be replaced, it's over 106,000 miles on it at this point.
Thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve new business item E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 4-0-0. New business item F. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to South County Steel Incorporated, 192 Waits Corner Road, West Kingston, Rhode Island, for the Dougway Bridge Steel Fabrication and Installation Project in an amount not to exceed $37,000, including a contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the police Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated September 6, 2011, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Dougway Bridge Steel Fabrication and Installation Project.
There are two resolutions on tonight's agenda, item F and item G, which would provide authorization for the award of two separate contracts, and I'll deal with both contracts in this presentation. Item F would provide the contract for the structural steel that would be necessary to replace the Dougway Bridge. Item G would provide for the actual construction of the wooden structure itself that would be placed on the steel. The Dougway Bridge was closed to vehicular traffic on January 24 of this year. We then removed the existing wooden and steel structure on March 23. So, since March 23, there has been no ability to cross Queen's River at that location. The Public Services Department provided a report subsequent to the removal of the bridge, indicating that there were two options. One was to leave the bridge closed indefinitely, and the second was to construct a new bridge that would meet current ASHTOES or federal standards for bridge construction. The estimated cost at the time that that engineering review was completed was between $750,000 and $850,000. Subsequent to that report, I requested the Public Services Department to do an analysis on why we could not replace the bridge using the 1992 plans that were developed for the bridge that had just recently been removed. We then looked at the cost estimate and obtained a legal opinion that the town had the legal ability to be able to replace the single-lane bridge. With the legal opinion in place, and the caveat being that the 1992 plans had to be reviewed for 2011 standards, we then commissioned an engineering firm who had originally prepared the 1992 plans to redevelop those plans to meet any and all new conditions for the construction of a single-lane bridge. That work was completed by Resource Controls, which was a successor company to Sigmund Engineering, and we paid them approximately $9,400 to be able to develop the bidding documents that resulted in the bids that you have this evening. The town went out to bid for the structural steel. The structural steel came back where we had approximately eight bidders. The prices ranged from a low of $31,000 with South County Steel in West Kingston, to a high of $106,000 with Cotty Corporation. Recommendation this evening would be to award to South County Steel with a not-to-exceed of $37,000. That would include a $6,000 contingency. The second resolution is for the award for the timber construction. That timber construction, I believe, had seven bidders. Prices ranged from a low of the $57,970 to a high of $128,800. Recommendation would be to award to Riley Construction LLC out of Cranston for the low bid price. Again, a $7,030 contingency, raising the overall award price to $65,000, is proposed for council consideration. The base bid will be the $31,000 plus the $57,970, for a total of $88,970. Along with the Resource Control Contract of '94, we'll be looking at a minimum expense of $98,370 for the complete replacement of the bridge in kind as a single-lane bridge. What I've also requested Public Services to do is to redesign the approaches on both the north and the south to channel the traffic in an effort to be able to slow the speed once that bridge is constructed, as well as to tee up the intersection on the north side of the bridge, so that we will not have somebody being able to enter the bridge at a high rate of speed. Those improvements will be made through the Public Services Department subsequent to the bridge construction. Materials-wise, we may be spending between $5,000 and $10,000 in addition. I will also be recommending that the bridge be posted for pickup truck or less in-size vehicle traffic. The bridge will have the capacity to handle public safety vehicles for EMS or fire vehicles, but we do not want to have truck traffic, large truck traffic going on. but we do not want to have truck traffic, large truck traffic going over that bridge, and we'll ask the council to set those standards. As far as the construction schedule is concerned, with the award of the contracts this evening, I am still awaiting DEM's approval to be able to reconstruct the bridge. That application was filed approximately four to five weeks ago. We anticipate receipt of the approvals hopefully within the next few weeks. The construction schedule, it'll take probably, from the time of award on the steel, probably take a couple of months for the fabrication and the construction. I would hope that if there are no delays within the DEM permits or because of adverse weather, that we would see the bridge completed by the end of this calendar year. So, it'll take us less than a year to be able to deal with the issue where we have potential for catastrophic failure on that bridge to having a replacement bridge in place. The changes that are made to the bridge are to provide a safer pedestrian lane as far as an inability for vehicles to be able to jump that pedestrian way. I think that this is an important project for that area, and I'm recommending that the council support it as presented in the bidding documents and award the contracts as noted in items F and G.
Thank you. Do we have questions here at the table for Steve? Polly?
The trucks can use that road that runs on the other side of...
Glen Rock Road would be where we would want to keep the large trucks. I mean, obviously, we're, we still, and I'll mention this, too, the town is still in litigation with Federal Express, which was responsible for limited damage to that bridge. What we want to do is to keep those type of vehicles off of that structure.
And that adds about 10 minutes to the trip that would, for the trucks?
I'd let the residents comment to that aspect of it. I think it depends really in what, in what direction you're going, whether you're going, going on 138, you know, east or west, but we believe that as we channel the approaches to that from the south, that it would certainly be better for us to be able to keep the larger trucks off of that, off of that bridge. We still have to look at the bus contracts on whether or not that issue can be addressed through the school department if they need that bridge, but the bridge will be able to support that effort. It's the commercial trucks that we have concerns with at this point, and the conflict that always has existed with a single-lane bridge with two-way traffic.
Thank you. Further questions here at the table? Carol?
Steve, you said you're awaiting the DEM approval in a few weeks, and did you say that you could have this project done by the end of this year, December of 2011?
I would hope to have it done by Christmas of this year.
Great. Wow.
Again, there's two things with, DEM has to give us a permit to be able to replace the bridge in kind. The abutments are the same abutments that we're using that had been in place, as well as the center pier. What, the only work that we need to do from a municipal standpoint before we see the steels brought to the site would be to add riprap around the center pier. And that's part of the permit review that is currently sitting before DEM. I don't anticipate problems with that permit. It just is going through an administrative process.
Okay, this is good news. Kathy?
And just what you were talking about, Mike, and you don't have to get into any of the details of it, but we have been approached by FedEx, so it is still an active case, litigation case, so there could be actually even more funding, because this is a town bill, all, we are not getting any federal money, this is a town road, this is all ours to pay.
It is a very active case that we are pursuing very vigorously, and I have been in discussions with legal counsel for FedEx. I think it'll take a little time, but we are, I assure you, we're pursuing.
At this point, before we vote, I know that there's people here interested in this. I don't know if it's appropriate to...
There are questions.
Questions from the community on this topic before we vote on it? Or comments?
Hi, I'm Pete Blampey from Queen's River Drive. I live in the Queen's River Drive neighborhood. Thank you very much for that summary. I would like to have two points additionally. There is a third option available to us besides either not doing anything or replacing the bridge, and that is replacing it with a pedestrian cycling bridge only. I'm not sure whether that option has been even considered or explored at all, but I wanted to put that out there. And the other is the, you know, we tried restricting that bridge from truck traffic before we shut it down, and we're, that experiment really failed pretty miserably. So, I think anything we can do to try to help encourage those larger trucks to go around would be helpful, maybe a height-limiting...
The toll booth that we're going to have...
Toll booth would be good. That would be good. I'd like that.
Prevent that from happening.
Good, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Peter Stack, Glen Rock Road, West Kingston. I am excited that north and southwest Kingston might be merged. Again, we have been neighborhood-divided, and many of us are looking forward to it returning to its former self. I know that there are some across the river who have been appreciative of the change of traffic climate, but we on the north side of the river have not liked the change in traffic climate. There is more traffic passing my house from people who would otherwise have taken the bridge as they come down Glen Rock from North Mail Road. And there are many walkers and cyclists and swimmers and others who have missed the bridge, myself included. So, I took the opportunity, having looked at the specs, not the specs, but the tentative or recommendation for bid, and spoke with the parties involved. And I'm delighted that the work can possibly go to a local vendor, who, by the way, did a very similar job over the body of water exiting the Great Swamp, which I couldn't find the name for on my map, under old Biscuit City Road. And that bridge by South County Steel is certainly rated for a full cement truck, which I think this bridge would satisfy, but we will have traffic restrictions, as Mr. Alfred referred to. And it is going to be galvanized, which is wonderful. Earlier conversation I had with someone in the town, and they said, "Oh, I don't think we can afford galvanized steel," but I'm delighted to hear that South County Steel has that bid for that product. Likewise, the timber deck contractor, as specked, is ready to work. He's done many DOT projects, larger bridges. He said, "This is a piece of cake." And it's certainly delightful to have a very similar bridge come back to our neighborhood as opposed to the concrete spans and all kinds of possibilities that were talked about early on, and the nearly $1 million price tag. So, I'm going to leave the podium so that maybe this project can get underway more quickly. I'm delighted we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Priscilla Purinton, Queen's River Drive. One question is whether it will be done by Christmas. I know if you're waiting for DEM to issue permits, it can take a while. So, one concern would be extra snowplow attention, because those turf fields do drift over, and when those are bad, we have to exit over the river, or that's what we've done in the past. So, we could essentially be stranded. Sometimes the road will drift over, Dougway Bridge Road will drift over within an hour of it having been plowed. So, if it should be extended into the new year, I would hope that the town would send out the plow guys a little more often than they might otherwise. And it was those plow guys at times who went over the bridge when it was restricted. The town vehicles ignored that weight restriction at times, I'm sorry to say.
I've got to give him a shovel.
We all have shovels, but we're hoping the town will take care of it. One other question about...
We'll certainly try to take care of, you know, we try to take care, we've got quite a few roads in town that do drift over with wind conditions, so we're certainly aware of where those roads are, and we'll certainly continue to be diligent as far as that street is concerned.
Thank you. And one other question, you said there'll be riprap around the center pillar?
That's correct.
Would that impede kayakers?
No, what we're looking at is really, there was scouring that occurred with the March 2010 run of that river. And there is a need for us to reinforce on that center pier, just around the pier itself. We're not talking about any broad expansion of it, but rather to fill in the cavities that would have been lost as far as the smaller stones that have moved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Paula Mangiacapra, Glen Rock Road on the north side. I'd like to thank Mr. Alfred for the efforts that you've put forth so far, but just to speak to a point that was raised by the first speaker, I really think the third option, I don't think you're even considering it, but in terms of safety and getting vehicles, emergency vehicles on our side of Glen Rock Road, a pedestrian bridge is not going to cut it. And I point out a situation where we had a chimney fire by our former speaker, Mr. Stack, and the fire trucks had Glen Rock Road pretty much blocked off for quite a long period of time. And it occurred to me as I was sitting in my living room that if I needed an ambulance or some other emergency vehicle, they would have had to, first of all, know that the bridge wasn't open, and second of all, know that they had to go around through Mail Road and down through Exeter, which it's more than just a 10-minute inconvenience. And so, I'm really happy that we're going to be talking about a vehicular bridge. And the only other question that I had was, what provisions are made for the maintenance? Peter has mentioned something about galvanized steel, but in all the years that that steel bridge spanned the Queen River that I can remember, absolutely zero maintenance was done on the steel that supported it. The granite is there forever, I guess, but it's constantly either the decking or the steel supports that are problematic.
I think that you have, the steel that was there from 1992, the problem with those types of bridges with wooden decks is that you get the sand and salt that goes right onto the girder itself, and it creates the problem. We have commenced a bridge inspection program for the 11 bridges that we have in town. Those are inspected once every three years at this point, and then there's maintenance that's required based on those inspections. And the inspections aren't done in-house, they're done through an outside firm.
Right.
So, hopefully, we'll have a better maintenance plan in place for all of our bridges, not just this one. You learn from the issues that you deal with.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? I just want to, before we take the vote, also let you know that Senator Sizniewski would have liked to have been here tonight. I know that she's been a strong advocate for this bridge as well. I mean, she's in a meeting in Providence, so she's had a lot of communication back and forth with myself. So, are we ready to vote on new business item F?
Move approval of new business item F and G.
Second?
Okay, and I didn't read G, but Steve went into it, so we're good. So, F and G? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I'm sorry, Kath?
I just want to state, too, that it's under Riley Construction, and my maiden name is Riley, but I have no idea of any of these Riles, so just make it clear that I have no idea of Riles. But I'm glad the Irish are in the building.
Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 400. Thank you. And if I can, before we adjourn, there's one date that I forgot. On September 15, we have a joint meeting of the South Kingston Economic Development Committee and near-Gansett Economic Development Committee. September 15, 6 o'clock at Holiday Inn. Any further comments before we close?
No.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 400. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.